Just commercial to go in their business.
For a little while.
Just a commercial to go in their business.
For a little while. Can you imagine?
Did you get it?
Five million dollars in sales here.
We're on market replace.
I just can't find.
Okay, we're about two minutes out.
You're good. You have, we have unmuted.
So I can tell off colored jokes at this point that's not on the phone.
No, no more. Please don't do. Did you get it, Joe?
I got it now. Just gotta get it downloaded. Welcome everybody out to the Roy City Council Special Work Session for June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. It's five P M. We have with us. Councilmember Jackson, councilmember Wilson, councilmember Sophie Paul, councilmember Scanon, and councilmember Joe Paul. The main discussion item today is we're going to be discussing, I should make sure that you're recording. Recording?
Yeah, we're just double checking some things, but yeah.
Want to make sure we're discussion item we're focusing on is the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget. Let me just make sure that we recap a little bit before we turn the time over to Matt and Amber. First thing is that you were presented a bu- balanced budget. If you do nothing else, you can approve that, you can't approve it tonight, but we can go forward with that proposed budget and then next Tuesday at this time or close to this time, we will go for a vote to approve that budget. There are three major elements that are on the table. You may include other conversation points. Tonight, one would be is, is these are non-funded budget requests for next year. Police department like five additional police officers for a total of about six hundred thousand dollars. Fire department like nine additional firefighters for additional eight hundred thousand dollars. And the complex would like to do upgrades up to include about a million dollars in upgrades. I should indicate too, and you know, you're already aware of this, that we've now had to shut down the complexes primarily it shut down just in swimming. And probably the the shower rooms, I assume, since they're running off the boiler.
No, just the, just the pool area.
Just the pool, okay.
No, it's a different heating system for the showers.
Okay, so bottom line is, is that it's shut down and as you well know, council, you've already received emails from residents who have asking some interesting questions. So with that, Matt, we'll turn the time over to you and Amber to kind of lead us into this conversation.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, for the intro. You touched on a lot of the topics that we wanted to talk about. Last meeting, we, we really left off because we didn't have all the pieces to the puzzle and that's one of the things is just the tax rate and where that came in at. You don't get that until June eighth came in, June ninth, we had that information, we sent it out to city council. We hold the rate, it comes up to twenty-eight point five percent. But I'm going to have Amber go through that a little bit more, but also I want to talk about the process so everybody understands what it is and how it happens. So I'll turn it over to Amber.
Well, I just wanted to give you kind of a process of what we go through next Tuesday during the meeting. So next Tuesday night at the council meeting, we have to either approve a final budget or a tentative budget. So if we want to keep the tax revenue the same, then we need to adopt a final budget, which would be the document that we sent out a couple of weeks ago and then whatever changes you want to make to that document. If you want to change the property tax revenue we receive, then we would still need to adopt a tentative budget, which would be the document you received with whatever changes you have. And then we would go through the truth and taxation process to possibly increase the property tax revenue we receive. The way the county does it is you are given the same amount of tax revenue every single year. Based on home values, they back into the rate based on home values and the revenue we receive. So if we request more revenue, we have to go through the truth and taxation process. So on June twenty-second, which is the day after our meeting, we have to submit to the county the amount of revenue we are requesting. So if it's anything above what we received last year, we go through the truth and taxation process and we cannot, we cannot request more after that time. So on the twenty-second, when I tell the county how much we are requesting, that would go to a vote in August, but we can't go any higher than that. So it needs to be the most possible you want to receive in property tax revenue, if that makes sense. Then when you vote in August, you can always vote less than that. You could even vote zero if you don't want to do any, but we can't go higher than whatever that revenue is that we submit to the county. Okay, so like he says, the holding tax rate did come in at twenty-eight point five percent. That tells you how much property values have increased in Roy over the last year. To give you an idea, last year it went up thirteen percent. This year it went up twenty-eight percent. So that's quite a bit. So does anybody have any questions on next Tuesday's process, what we need to decide on that? Like tonight needs to be informational gathering session, ask any questions you have so that you're prepared to vote next week on those, one of those two things.
What's the, what's the best guess on the date if we, that you hold a truth and taxation in August?
So we have to adopt it before September first. So I would suggest our last meeting in August, which I can't remember the exact date.
That's okay, but the last.
Second meeting in August, we would do it at that date.
So we can do a truth and taxation and not increase the rate?
Correct. That is the sixteenth. There is five Tuesdays also in August.
So the sixteenth?
Yeah, the sixteenth is our last meeting date, but there's also a thirtieth after that. We can still meet that, September first deadline.
So you can vote and approve anything lower than what we submit to the county, but you can't go higher. So you can't start at five and then want to do ten later.
Right, whatever percent you submit is the maximum.
Well, it's actually, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not even a percent. It's an actual, it's a revenue dollar amount that we want to get out of, back into, back into the percent.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, critical. Let me ask you about, I sent it, a request to you, Amber. So the council has some numbers to look at. Can you tell the council if they choose, it says we're looking maybe at a five percent or a ten percent, we definitely got the twenty-eight percent. So we know what that hard number is. Any ideas of what a five, ten, or fifteen, or twenty percent property tax increase will yield in terms of revenue?
Yeah, so if we do a five percent rate, that's approximately two hundred thousand dollars per year. It would be sixteen dollars and twenty cents per year increase on the average home in Roy. That it just, like if you go from five to ten, then it would just, everything would double. So if we go to ten percent, it would be four hundred thousand per year, fifteen percent would be about six hundred thousand per year. Yearly increases too, if you want to know any of those.
And they would just basically do the same thing double each, each year.
Yeah, so a five percent increase would be sixteen, twenty annually, sixteen dollars and twenty cents annually on the average price home. So if you have a more expensive home, yours would go up more and figures is less, it would be less. Average home value is four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars.
So ten percent would be thirty-two dollars and forty cents a year.
Yes. Okay, perfect. Okay, council, I need information for Amber before we turn it over to Matt and Matt kind of lays out tonight's conversation. Okay. So what are our options, Matt? Where are we going? What do you think we need to know before we get started into the discussion?
When we submitted the tentative budget back in May, there were some lingering items in that tentative budget. Mayor, you did a good job of just identifying those when we started out with the, the employees with public safety. We have the taxes that we need to discuss, the complex that has came up in the past, and then the position of economic development director. I think that those are the four major items that we need to discuss tonight. Like Amber suggested that we don't need to come up with necessarily a vote or anything because we can't vote on it tonight, but we do need to discuss that. So we have some, some grounds to go off of next week.
Okay. So. Well, let me.
Do you want the recommendation or do you want to go?
Yeah.
Get into the discussions.
Just make a comment before we jump into this. Council, here's the reality. If you ran the numbers, the fiscal year twenty-two budget said that we basically were spending twelve million, nine hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in salaries. That was last year's budget. This year's budget, because of some requirements that we needed to pay us, public safety and for the most part all administrative personnel and everybody else, the budget going into there is fourteen million, seven hundred and eighty-eight. There's a one point eight or one point eight two one salary increase that we have occurred, okay, going into this budget cycle. Now, that budget would include two percent on COLA and then the merit increase requirements that have already been stated. What we have not had a conversation with, okay, through this entire process is matching revenue increases, okay, to match the expenses we've incurred in terms of salaries. There has been no discussion about that. And remember, it's the council's responsibility to help generate the revenue. It's the city manager's responsibility, okay, to spend it and you control what he spends. So the, so the bottom line here is this. We just increased almost two million dollars in salary and we've not seen any increase in terms of revenue compensate for that salary. And then it's not going to change. In fact, it may get worse. If we keep adding the COLA requirements and we're seeing the issues happening this year, which will be the foundation for two thousand twenty-four rate, we can pretty well bet that just not just the merit, but probably a more sizable COLA will need to be necessary just to match it. And you don't have to go too far, but read today's paper, what Ogden's doing. Ogden's already made a declaration, he's going to pay their firefighters fourteen percent more. Their police officers eight percent more and most of their employees, if not all their employees, about thirteen percent more. And so Mike told me they were going to do this and they're just going to make sure they keep up. And you know, we're in a wage war now. And that's what's going to happen. We're going to find ourselves continuing until somebody, I'm hoping at a state level steps in and says this nonsense has got to stop. But until then, okay, we've got to ask some hard questions to figure out. But most importantly, question is, are we going to find sources for revenue so that we can match the expenses? And that's a conversation we have not had, may not be a conversation we're going to have in this meeting, but you cannot continue going forward without us figuring out how we're going to pay for all this. And that's a conversation we need to have. So you go understand all the issues, do nothing, we go with the budget, the spacing in front of us, we approve that next week. If you believe that there's a real conversation needs to happen in dealing with both the complex, the fire department and the police department, this is the time to throw your ideas on the table and let's see if we can work through them. Who would like to begin?
Well, I think we need to address the elephant in the room. It's the complex. Okay, I, I think we need cold, hard numbers. There's been so many numbers thrown around by so many different people that you couldn't keep track of if you had to. So I'm, I'm going to call on our good friend Ross Oliver to tell us the person that's responsible for maintaining and, and keeping that place operational in the pool and the heating and all that. What is it going to cost us flatline to put a boiler in?
With a new boiler and the plumbing that goes to it, I, your wife has seen it. I don't know if anybody else has seen down there. It's about two hundred thousand dollars for the boiler, the new boiler. We can rebuild the old one for, I think it's forty-eight, fifty thousand dollars, but we still have an old boiler that.
And an air coil.
And we have to have air coil and that's about twenty-five thousand. And then if we're going to be shut down that long, we might as well do the pool while we're at it and that's another hundred, three hundred and fifteen thousand.
Explain that. Make sure what you mean by that. Talking about putting a new liner in?
No. The plaster, we have places where the rebar starting to expose itself in there. We replastered it the first year I was here and I've been here thirty-two years, so.
Now, would it be prudent whilst we have, and we're looking to replaster to go through and actually replace all of the other plumbing that's underneath it as well? Because at some point in time, we're going to need access to that as well, correct?
That has been.
Has it?
On the pool side of it, there's some drains that have to be replaced, but on the pool side of it, most of plumbing has been replaced. So you're.
Plumbing that needs to be replaced, is it on the exercise?
Boiler itself, there's all this steam lines that come into the boiler. They're cast iron and then you also have in the pressing room, women's. We don't know what that looks like. It's underground. We had access to the men's locker room and we pulled some of that out. And it's a four inch line that looked for like into the half line now because of all the.
It's all corroded and.
Yeah. So.
So I mean, you're, you're talking six hundred thousand dollars.
Eight hundred and forty. Is that including that electrical and the remodeling of the bathrooms?
You're talking another three hundred thousand.
Them three or nine hundred.
Nine hundred and ten thousand for those three. But we have an aerobic room floor that needs to be replaced. We need ceiling tile. Yeah, and electrical have some. She actually seen the acid room, how bad it is, so.
So now you're pretty close to a million dollars, which we were just told to get one point one five million dollars is a twenty-eight point five percent tax increase to keep the complex operational for who knows how long.
Having an old water heater, I showed, showed it Sophie. It's huge. It's covered in asbestos. So we, that's another cost I've never put together what it would be cost, what it would cost to get rid of that, out of there. Water heaters, it's heating his, is the old moeda water heaters. We stole them out of the moeda before we tore them down, took them up there and installed them. So. They were building ninety something hours.
Twenty.
Well, it's a little less than twenty-eight, but it's more than twenty-five.
Yeah, it's twenty.
But we don't need, that Matt, you have, we could get money from another fund. We don't have to do the full tax increase to pay for that, right?
We do have fund balance. So this, the big thing is, is this is one time money when you spend it and there is a fund balance there, yes. So we have the capital projects fund and we also have the fund balance within the general fund.
And our budget's not taking into consideration the inflationary rate of how much are you spending on gas today versus how much were you spending on gas a year ago?
But I think just with gasoline prices going up as much as they have, we started originally, the department heads went at this in February. And a lot of that stuff hasn't been discussed going into it because it was February stuff that we were looking at.
Right here is for about a million dollars, so fifty thousand, so it's good for about twenty, twenty years if we do this. So fifty thousand, we do everything, fifty thousand dollars a year. So for fifty thousand dollars a year, we'd have a pretty new complex. We'd have a pretty sufficient re finished or redone refurbished, that's the word.
We have lipstick on the pig. We would have, we would have lipstick on the pig.
This exact same building existed in Orem. Same makeup design and everything built the same year. They closed it two years ago because they made the decision it was not worth funding it anymore.
You saw that on TV and I thought it was our building.
I, I think we have to get down to niceties versus necessities and in a year when inflation's up and, and everything is else is up and you know, spending some time with police officers and firefighters that can't take vacation time, they're on mandatory callbacks. We just spent one point five million dollars to keep our employees and what are we doing to maintain that going forward? I, I could not see putting a billion dollars into that pool that we lose four hundred thousand dollars in a year, every year. It doesn't make financial sense anyway you try to slice it.
No.
Well, when you take a look at, when you take a look at statistics and stuff like that, actually having the complex there, it's, it shows that those kind of programs decrease the crime rate in the youth. We're going to be having an increase youth with all of the high density housing, the town homes that are coming in, we've got three hundred units coming across, we're going to be having increased youth. We know that seventy to eighty percent of them are going to be double working or single family homes. That increases problems with crime rate and so it's been proven that recreation programs decrease the crime rate. We already have an entity that if we put a little bit of lipstick on it that would last for twenty years, twenty years is a long time for lipstick. And that can decrease crime rate. And when we add a lot of staff members, which maybe we need to, that's not a one time deal. That is every year and it's not going to be six hundred thousand for police one year. It's going to be increased because of COLA, it's going to be increased because of trying to catch up. We do need to take care of what we have. And so if we extend ourselves with excessive numbers of staff member, then how do we, how do we even maintain what we've got, let alone add that kind of to it? So I think that it's a balance and it's a service. You're right, constitutionally, we need to do public safety, but on the other hand, we have a history, people have put a lot of money into this complex. Our previous, you know, councils and citizens and for it just to go and crumble because of fifty thousand dollars a year for twenty years, I don't believe that that re- reaps a reward that is beneficial for the entire, for the entire city. And, and granted, you know, we talk about, you don't want private us doing something that private citizens can, or private businesses can do, but this doesn't. This is a different thing altogether. This isn't E O S V A S A and E O S. They don't want the senior citizens coming into it. They don't want the youth programs that we're able to promote there. And I believe that there may even be other ways to help raise the money. But I believe the complex actually has, as I've done further study, I have to admit, I wasn't, I didn't necessarily think that originally, but the more study I've done, I believe it's got a bigger role than we need to and it is definitely going to be worth the fifty thousand dollars and, you know, unless we have an earthquake, then we've got a lot of other problems, so. I think that the complex needs to.
Well, nobody can guarantee twenty years out of it that you put one million dollars into it, you're gonna get twenty years out of it. So to, to throw out a number that says we're gonna, it's only gonna cost us fifty thousand dollars a year, it's already cost us four hundred thousand dollars a year that we're losing money. So.
But if you take a look at what four hundred thousand, three hundred and eighty-five thousand will be this next year, what is that? If you take a look, that's forty-five percent of the cost, total cost of the complex is revenue. And so when we take a look at our total parks and recreation, we, we lose, we're subsidizing ninety percent of our parks and rec. This is like one entity, you've got the complex, you've got Emma Russell, you've got, um, George Wallen. That's ninety percent of subsidization to be able to have those parks and serve a portion. And this is also, this is just like another portion of parks and rep. We've already got the big funding in there because it's there, now we just need to add a little bit to it because. It's been kind of let go for a while, we need to do it at once. I mean, this is, this is more than just, um, you know. Lipstick or just giving in for it because I think it has a bigger place in our ci- city and our society and in helping.
Why can't we utilize, we are, we have an aquatic center, why can't we throughout the summer do water aerobics there, maybe we open early in the morning, maybe we. Stay later at night, why can't we do swimming lessons there? I get it, it's only, it's only three months of the year, but maybe we look at. Can we save for a couple of years of the money we're losing and, and put something into there? In, in talking to mayors of other cities that's have pools or have had pools, the expense that goes into them. You know, Leyton City every year is faced with the fact, do we keep the thing open? Look at the Marshall White Center, I mean, it's.
So how do you take the difference between losing ninety percent?
Because that's operational, not again, because the, the complex is a hundred percent infrastructure in terms of what we're looking at in terms of capital outlay. To continue it forward, right? So we're saying a one, one million dollar outlay right now. Plus coupled with the four hundred thousand dollars a year that we're losing, which it's actually gonna go up because your point was that. Roughly forty-five percent, uh, we, we recoup based upon revenue that's generated, the complex is gonna be down for at least six months. So we can wipe away fifty percent of that, so now we're looking at one point three million dollars that we're in essence going to lose over this next year. I cannot, I cannot.
Operational though, even in regards to the parks, you put in three hundred thousand dollars for pickleball courts, you put in however much you need for West Park when it comes in. You're still talking about a huge amount that's being subsidized and you, you know, you can't be suddenly now. Deciding that you're gonna talk about apples and then throw something else in, when you're talking about subsidization, it's being subsidized ninety percent. We're talking operational cost.
So Ross, what do you think? Do you think it's worth saving?
Oh, that's fair answer to me.
Travis, I know Travis, I, I know every citizen that I've talked to, I, all my family that lives in Roy. Wants the complex to be fixed, they just think it's too important. You know, too many senior citizens use it all year round, our high school uses it for our swim team.
So they'll let the high school fund it, I mean, they get off on a free paycheck on.
Well, they pay money.
How much money do they really pay us every year?
It's not tons of money.
Right.
It's a couple thousand dollars.
And I think we'll use it for a few months.
Compared to where we're losing four hundred thousand.
Band-aid along though, I think it's either give us all. Forever and now.
Right.
Where we're, where we're at, so.
Yeah, I don't think the, the question is even, do we want it or not want it? Everybody I've talked to wants it. Who wants to get their taxes increased?
Correct.
To pay for it, not one of my emails, I emailed a whole bunch of my friends, I texted my friends and I said, who of you, what do you think? Not one of them said, yes, we want it and please increase my taxes.
I haven't used it, increased it twenty-five percent. Or twenty percent, or even fifteen, you can subsidize. We could take part of that as a general fund, if we generated six hundred thousand.
You, you wouldn't have my vote for that.
I, I wouldn't support it.
So I don't think that's the, the fight here, I, everybody wants it, we know everybody loves it.
Well, all the question I talked to would go for a tax increase.
So then let's throw it out to a vote, let's, let's put it on the ballot and vote for it then.
You know what, that, that's actually the way you're gonna get the best information.
Agreed.
Cause you know, when it comes down to it.
Vote the budget the way it is right now, no capital expenditures in it and is it too late to get something on a ballot for?
Well, that would be a ballot.
Well, it would be part of truth and taxation, right? Cause this goes back to, let's shoot for the stars, right? Because for us to fully fund, and again, I'm, I would only do it in the form of a tax increase is the only thing that I, I would go to put to the public. Because we can't raise the funds elsewhere, right? We can't bond for it, right?
Well, let's make sure we understand what the options are.
Okay. Geo bond would be a valid bond.
They can do the bond, but the question is, do you want to put a bond in an old horse or do you want a bond for?
For a new horse, right, that's, that's where I'm getting at.
I'd rather bond and put something in the aquatic center.
Agreed.
At some point, when the school decides that it's time to rebuild the Roy High, they're gonna need and want that property anyway. They're already wanting to take over Sandridge Park to expand things at Sandridge. That's where they're gonna do the rebuild.
Ten, ten, ten years.
Yeah, but we're, we're about ready to put fifty thousand a year for twenty years in it and halfway through that, the school's gonna want it. And they've been, you know.
So if you take a look at what a hundred thousand dollars is, what percentage is of, of that of the total budget that we have? I mean, when you talk about the service that that provides, you know, that's like what, point zero two five percent of the, you know, one percent. If three hundred and eighty-five is like, you know, one percent, a little over one percent of the budget. For the year, you know, and you're talking about a very minute, when you're taking a look at the entire budget, that's a very small portion of it. And for the service, I mean, when you.
And it's a very small portion of the population that uses it compared to the population that don't use it.
Well, I think we need to advertise more for it, I talked to Travis about this, about raising it price from, you know, at least five dollars to four. All these new places that are coming in have flyers, there's so many people, they don't even know what the complex. Uh, you know, has to offer and if we, you know, people saw more what it did and all these, like Diane said, people that are moving into the city. And all these townhomes and they're gonna have to somewhere to recreate and if we had flyers and said, you know.
Let the townhomes put in their own swim pool, that's usually what goes into those type of developments anyway.
Well, my, my HOA has pickleball, my HOA has.
A swimming pool.
A swimming pool, it has a basketball court, I have all of those amenities as part of my HOA that's been there for forty years.
Yeah, we have six point in the third one, like we can't say that, so that's, we have those facilities and we have two pools, we are lucky. Right now, we already have a pool that's functioning and we gotta.
We, we have a pool that gets used almost as much by Riverdale, West Haven and, and Washington Terrace as Roy residents do. But we're not raising their taxes. We're raising taxes of Roy residents, which. If I recall the last tax increase that went through mayor, you were the only one on the council at the time. And the only reason you're still here is you didn't vote for it, because everybody else is gone and I'm not in preservation mode. But there is no way I could in good faith raise somebody's taxes for something that's losing four hundred thousand dollars a year. If I was a business major, they would have locked me up a long time ago if I did something like that, so.
Yeah, but you remember, this is a city and you're granted, we definitely want to try to make this as good as possible.
Plenty of recreation activities, it's not the only recreation activity.
Long, you got them all winter long, plenty of recreation activities all winter.
Do we have to provide something all winter long?
No, we don't.
Then, then let's partner with the Boys and Girls Club, let's.
But they only, they only accept fifty teens during the school year and fifty teens during the summer year, that's it.
Uh, we have an, we own part of an enclosed gym over at the junior high school, can that be used more for basketball and activities?
I mean, the studies show you have a fifty, have fifty-seven percent increased dropout rate when you don't have good after school activities. Forty-nine percent increased drug use and thirty percent increased arrested teens when they don't have.
Can you add some more activities to your plate that doesn't involve a swimming pool?
Can we do a pickleball?
As far as at the current facility?
No, the new one, when we finish that, we're doing.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I think during when the warm weather months, you know, the warm weather months, sure you can, you know, uh.
I mean, you have one of the best program administrators when it comes to recreation out there. Let her get creative and let that group get creative of what other things we could do, what other programs that we can add that doesn't include a swimming pool.
I do agree that we are blessed with a great program coordinator, um. I, I, at this point, I couldn't add anything more to her plate for that, um. That, that being said, um, you know, uh, I just.
You have a full-time employee that there that might be displaced if that. Facility doesn't open back up to full capacity, could that person do some program coordination for seniors or?
Cause we also have the Hope Center, right? The Hope Center, we also have access to.
The Hope Center, we have access to during the winter months, when, or think when school's in session. We have it at night from six o'clock on, I will tell you, uh. We use that at the Recreation Department for basketball, I mean, we're, we're in there non-stop in the winter months. For basketball from September to March, uh, we're both in Roy Junior at that same time. Uh, we use them to practice basketball, to play games, different kinds, things like that. I don't know that we do have the resources to have winter activities outside of that.
What do cities that don't have a swim pool do? There's plenty around us because they all use ours.
Uh, some cities have facility, like Riverdale, for example, they have a rec center. Uh, some other places have the actual center and might not have the pool part of it.
I won't deny the fact that recreation is a necessity, we have to have programs and we do have programs. We have one of the best recreational programs around. I think we're the knight in shining armor when it comes to recreational programs. But does that mean we have to have a swimming pool?
Is how, yeah, well, this goes back to how many programs outside of swim lessons are we running out of the pool? Light guards, swim lessons, what else? What other rec programs? Well, yeah, silver sneakers can go to Vasa, EOS, whomever. My grandfather, who just passed away in January, was a silver sneakers and went to Vasa. So it's.
But even at that, if, if we hold out for a couple of years and, and, and see what happens and maybe even a year and bond. Or put it out for vote, a tax increase to. Put something down out of the one spot, we know we're at some point, we're on borrowed time with the school district in that building. So to go, to try to go out twenty years, just doesn't pencil out either.
We could go out ten years, you still got some money out of it, if you advertise it over ten years. And where would you, if you do a new one, where would you put it? Where would you put a new one?
Well, you wouldn't have to do that exact same thing because we already have other basketball opportunities, it's. How could we take the swim pool that's already there and build something to make it usable year round?
Yeah, the aquatic center, that's what we're talking about, basically putting in an ex, an enclosure over the aquatic center.
And even if you have to put a small locker room in there.
Right.
I mean, you're talking to open it up part-time for water aerobics, zumba or water aerobics, swim lessons. Lifeguard training, I'd rather invest one point five or two million dollars into that than a fifty-year-old complex.
I just think, you talked to Leyton, they hate that cover over there.
It wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be a permanent, it would be a permanent structure, it wouldn't be.
It comes up every year, a discussion whether they're gonna keep it or close it and every year there are people in their administration that hope they close it.
Right.
So.
I believe that half of the appeal for the aquatic center is, um, be able to have open area, I don't know that it's worth putting. You know, any money really into covering over the aquatic center, that serves a different purpose and.
It wouldn't, it just, just, it wouldn't be the entirety of it, just wanna clarify.
Lap pool, but, uh, I just can't see that, that you're really getting.
They have walked through the snow, you know.
Well, that's what I say.
You'd have to come to the pump house, yeah.
What could we do differently down there? I, I think we need to look outside of the box and what other programs can we do? What other things can we do versus to just keep dumping money into?
So are you saying that if we just did the new boiler and then plastered the pool? That would be sufficient for now, that would take maybe five months to redo and then. But the rest of the complex can stay open while that was being done, because that would be five hundred and something thousand, five hundred and forty thousand dollars. To do those two things with the bathroom thing in there for a while or?
The stuff needs to eventually be done, there's no doubt about that.
And so would you say either do those two things or just do it all or don't do anything?
I, I, I mean, from.
Me on the maintenance end, I say, give it all to us or don't do it at all.
Yeah, yeah, all are done.
Or that from the police chief.
A million bucks.
I'm a little bit more in, in, and he does the maintenance end, so, uh, obviously his vote highly matters there. I would be more on the pool area in the boiler and heater. And then, uh, the locker rooms, it, I would like it all right now too, I agree with him. But I could deal with it on the other side.
We're also not ADA compliant and I know we've been grandfathered in, but how long's that gonna last for, for eternity?
I, I would prefer that to Andy and Brody, I wouldn't even dare answer that question.
I know the swim pool's not ADA compliant, we don't have a way to put somebody in a wheelchair in there, we don't have a way.
There's an access to put people in.
There's a lift.
There's a lift to put them in.
Wheelchair in there, but you can put the person in there. We can't get anybody upstairs.
Yeah.
Lift weight.
There, there is no elevator access or anything like that.
Well. I know that we wanna keep it open, but nobody else does, so that's.
You two seem to be pretty adamant wanting to keep it open. You two seem to be pretty adamant to close it.
Wow.
I, I think it'd be a loss. Going to the, and it's both ways, you're gonna have a lot of people mad if you close it and you're gonna have a lot of people mad if you keep it open.
That's the way life is.
And that's really how it all, it panned down after going and seeing the place, I, there wasn't anything that didn't not need replaced. And I was shocked.
The gym floor.
Okay, yep, gym floor. But that was it.
New pickleball court.
That was it and it was, I was, it was hurting my heart, in fact, I kept telling him, I'm like, it, this hurts my heart. The thing that makes me mad on the conversations that I can't believe has not have, or that. Not, not happened, but, or this has come up in every council for ten, fifteen, twenty years. And it never gets onto this budget. And so now here we are and we're the bad guys and that's fine, that's, we're here to make decisions like this. But it's always taken off of the budget, so none of these past councils have ever thought it's important enough to put it on here, so.
It's the same reason, we were considered a bedroom community and never allowed for economic development in the city.
Could have done it a couple of years ago and done three hundred, four hundred a couple of years ago and. And, and kind of go on, but now we're at a point where it is run down.
Why, I don't, I can't. Why the former. Why they never did do anything for it, if it's been my crap for all those years.
I think probably two reasons, go ahead.
I was just, I think the staff over there has done an amazing job of being, being able to put it back together. They had great staff working very diligently about putting things and piecing it back together. And I think that's where Ross is coming from, is just saying, we need the money to make it a facility that is operational. That they don't have to wake up at night, every night and go reset things, they just want something there that is sustainable. But they have done an amazing job of piecing it together. And you can see that when you go over there, there's multiple places where they piece together, you know, the piping underneath the, the systems and. There's everything.
And they have done a masterful job and I commend them for it, but you can only do that for so long before you hit a brick wall. And when they, when the state shut us down for the boiler, that was our brick wall, yeah.
And that's the thing, is we're being penny wise, pound foolish, right? We're gonna turn around and we're gonna, you know, throw a million dollars at it. But longevity wise, we're still losing money on it, it doesn't pencil, it, I mean, i- i- if you go back to. You wanna, you want a politician that thinks like a businessman, I am thinking like a businessman at this particular point in time and this is just a absolute loss leader. It is the quintessential government boondoggle, for those that don't know what a boondoggle is, it's any government program that's run that has no business running, that also runs at a loss. And so I, I can't in good conscience, especially staring down the barrel of the fact that we do need police, we do need fire. Um, I, I can in good conscience, you know, look to spend any more capital. Um, to, to fix the actual complex, I'm, I'm.
If I was voting with my heart, I'd vote to keep it open, one hundred percent, but I'm voting with every citizen's pocketbook.
Correct.
And, and we have to make good financial decisions and that just doesn't pencil out any way you look at it. You can finagle the numbers any way you want to, but at the end of the day, it's losing almost four hundred thousand dollars a year and it needs a million dollars of upkeep. And at some point, we don't own the property.
Right, we are long-term lease, we're on a long-term lease.
Well, I don't believe you can use not owning the property as, uh, a really key factor, because if you take a look at the kind of money that we're losing every year for the parks. We're talking about, uh, one point three seven million, talk, talk for the parks, we don't own all of those. This is for operational costs, just like we're talking for the other, and we get a revenue of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's one point three seven million and we don't know, own all those parks, but we're still.
So let's get rid of all of our green space and bring building, bring businesses in.
Yeah, if, if that's.
See how that goes over.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, if we're losing that kind of money, we're, we're talking about a, a resource that we have. That with a little bit, we could actually maintain and continue. It's something that is very beneficial. You're right, other cities have it. Would, would I vote to do it now as a new thing? I wouldn't, but on the other hand, there's already been a lot of money put into it and to be able.
But again, that goes back to my penny wise, pound foolish. We're just eh, we're all generationally here, we're all familiar with the, the, the money pit movie, right? All they continue to do is throw money into the problem and it doesn't get any better.
So is every city that has a pool, I'm sure they lose money on theirs too.
It's a service. That, that's what the whole city does, the city loses money.
They all, that's.
But they're all, most of those cities also aren't seven and a half square miles with forty thousand. With a need for more businesses to generate sales tax revenue, which we don't have. Because our forefathers, our foreleaders wanted this to be a bedroom community. There was no planning for the future, which is why we're having this discussion to start with.
We're, we're just paying the piper at this particular point in time.
Well, and I think that goes both ways. I think eh, when they laid it out and you, you said it well, Joe. It, it might not have been laid out great economically, but I think the idea was it is a bedroom community that is going to invest.
Place to live, raise a family.
Facilities and great place to live and raise family and enjoy parks and recreation and the amenities that they bring. Um, the complex is open about forty-five hundred hours a year. Eh, that's more than anything else in the community. I, you know, I, I do see the amount of people that come there and not only get the benefits out of it physically, but emotionally. Uh, the ability to hang out with, with people their age that they might not get another opportunity to do but that. I do see the kids in the evening playing basketball and it scares me. Um, what's going to happen? When they don't have that opportunity.
Couldn't we not use our other basketball court and do some kind of a program there?
Um, that, you, you know, eh, as a credit to what you said about our, our, our great recreation programs. We, we use them for practice. I mean, frankly speaking, i- i- if, if we didn't. We, we use Roy Junior Sandridge in the Hope Center almost nightly for practice and play on Saturday.
Well, quickly to just address like um. Okay, I got, I gotta tread lightly with this one because I, let me make sure I word this correctly. The senior citizen population will be the first to bring the pitchforks and the torches when we raise their taxes. Because they're silver sneakers, they're not paying anything, it's a hundred percent government subsidized program.
They're unlimited income.
They're on limited income anyway. The second week is again, the only path forward that we, that, that I will accept, but we'd have to get the, the. Citizens to back it is if we actually did it on, on the back of a tax increase and those senior citizens will. Will, will, will crucify us for that tax.
Forty-eight dollars a year, we think they'll crucify us.
Oh heavens, yes.
Can I ask a question of why does it have to be on the back of the tax increase? And, and, and I guess all I'm asking.
Where are you going to get it? Yeah, where else is it coming?
I, I, I don't have a vote, my money traded, the backyard's dead.
Eh, eh, I, I don't have a vote, I would take it from the reserve account.
But we're, we're, we're facing.
In a, in a year of the greatest.
Level of inflation we have never seen.
We just to keep everybody happy, to keep your employees, to keep you to allow to have employees, we just put out one point five million dollars, which. For me was the best thing I've done, but it was damn unpopular. Eh, eh, and, and I agree, it was a, a great thing you did for the employees and, and I, I applaud, I applaud you for it. Eh, I guess my, my sense of viewing it, and it might be different, is. The reserve account, this is what it's for. It's for these one-time purchases and things like that and, and if, and. Taxes and, and we've seen Amber and other people put on there that the point of taxes and property taxes is to pay public safety. You know, eh, that, that was the idea behind it. So, I mean, that's just my two cents.
No, and I, I appreciate.
We have money in our reserve account to do something like this, then?
There is money in the reserve account, yes.
Ross has.
If we, eh, good, good, go ahead.
Want to say, give it all to me because I don't, nothing against you as a council, but. You give me six hundred next year, you, you can promise me all you want, you're going to give me the rest next year. I've seen that and nine years later, I didn't get what I wanted.
Million in the reserve account?
So, there's a, there's a lot of money in the reserve account, it's just what we want to do with that money is the choice.
You have to look at it as a rainy day fund as well.
Let me ask, let me ask this question, council, okay? I think there are two ish, there are basically two issues on the table. One issue would be is, and, and maybe you can help clarify this. It seems like the pool component of this is really at risk, in large part because that's where the major investments go. Just for clarification purposes, are we talking about completely shutting down the complex and locking the door? Or are we talking about retaining as much as we can with the existing complex? Which means we keep the court open, we keep the lifting, we keep as much as we can open, less the, in this case, less the pool. So in essence is, is that the people can still take advantage of what recreational capabilities exist there, but just not the pool because the boiler. It's not going to be operational based on what I'm hearing, you know, when you make the investment and therefore it becomes unfunct.
Well, I think those are the discussions we need to have with the school district and, and, and what we, do we turn it into a big Jell-O pit? I, I mean, i- i- if, if you're not going to open the pool up. Which, eh, which I agree, if we can continue to keep some programs open there for a period of time. Then I think there's a, there's a lot of discussions that need to happen um, beyond whatever the final vote is.
And that's why I'm fine with approving a tentative budget with the expenses that are currently allocated for the complex.
Just no capital.
Just no capital, so we can go through and start to have open and honest conversations with the school district. To come to some, you know, potential form of agreeable term with them. I would be so inclined is to just turn around and sell them the entire building for a dollar and donate the dollar. Um, just to get it off of our books. Because that's, that's in, in essence what we're looking about. It is a boondoggle.
So, so y- your position fundamentally would be is close the door. Your position would be is close the door or retain some type of operation.
Well, look at what is, what makes sense to retain. Um, does the school want to take part of it over? Do we want to continue to do it? Maybe we keep those, but I can't see that you could do anything with that pool. I, I don't think you're going to be able to fill it in and turn it into an indoor pickleball court.
That's okay.
Um, do you think we could?
Getting it engineered and see, because it's got a tunnel all the way around them. I don't know what it can handle, what it can.
Well, the, the, the still would take some expense to be able to go ahead.
We're, we're probably going to be down six months anyway to get all the repairs on minimum.
I just tried to get concrete pipe, you told me eight months, so.
Yeah, wow.
Concrete's a real issue.
Well, and last time I had a conversation of that and I said, how, you know, what would happen? So then what? When a treadmill goes out, do you fix the treadmill? Do you not fix the treadmill? Then when the plumbing goes out in the bathroom, do you fix the plumbing now? So are we just doing the inevitable and like?
Cause you still have the bathrooms and the locker rooms if you leave the gym and the basketball.
Bathroom, yeah, the plumbing in the bathroom, I don't know how that is still flushing.
Give it to the school, give it to the school, let the school decide what to do with it, it's on their property anyway.
Yeah, they're, they're going to own it one way or another.
Well, okay, I just, what we have to do is find out whether this is basically lock the door or whether or not we can find somewhere in between.
Is the door locked right now?
No.
To the pool, yes.
The pool, yes.
Yeah, but the rest of the facility is.
Was operation.
I, if we could get money out of the reserve account and fix it, that's what I would want to do.
So your position still would be is let's bring it back up so it's fully operational.
Right.
Okay.
I believe that uh, fully operationalism is important for our city.
Okay. So really, we want to get it back up, you become a functional operation by which I continue to provide service uh, for the city, the residents.
Yes.
Your position basically would be is is that let's work towards just simply shutting it down. And make the transition to the school district or because they already own the land.
Let them decide what, and maybe where, where. They've used it on our back for so many years, maybe our recreation department can use it on the back of the school for a few years.
Well, obviously this one team won't be using it this year because they start not.
Yeah, they start, yeah, they, they.
The school district is all about. School, it's not about development recreational programs.
Give it to them, they're going to use it for cheer, drill, camp, whatever, they're going.
But on the same token, could we use the basketball court like we do over at Roy Junior? The pro, and they're, they're a good host to us on the weekend. Uh, Roy Hyde is good with us to let us use it on Saturday. But as you well know, when you're talking boys' basketball, girls' basketball. Baseball, who wants winter workout, softball, cheer, dance, they don't have any space to give us Monday through Friday.
No, but at that building, what I'm saying is, they've been using it for how many years and giving us three thousand dollars a year? Let's give the building back to them and let us be able to use the gym, the basketball courts for basketball programs, indoor programs.
But if it's the schools, the school's going to use it. They're not going to say, honestly, it'll be used twenty-four seven as soon as you hand it to the school because. They need it. Every, every one of their athletic programs want.
Then give it to them, where are they putting money into it? Where are they having the hard discussion of what to do with it?
Well, I know Larry Havies taking over for the buildings, July first.
Okay. Then July first, let's ask him how much money they want to put into it.
I, I couldn't answer that, I, I, I mean, you would, you would. You would know better than me.
Sophie, eh, I need, we, as a council, need to have at least your position, where you think this needs to go. And then I think we probably will have an idea of what the.
I don't agree with taking out of reserve. And I say shut the doors, I'm not going to raise taxes for it.
Okay, so I, I think, I think we have a majority of the council basic waving it is that at whatever point in time it's decided. We just transition out of the complex. I think that's what the council's position is. Now, okay, going with that premise, okay, now the question is. And we need, we have to set it, council had to set a date when that would go in, be implemented. Uh, you would, that would have to be part of the budget because it's changing a couple of things here. First thing is going to change your expense side. Uh, you're right now spending seven hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, okay, to sustain that. Uh, or at least that's it, but you're also in the budget projecting a three hundred thousand dollar revenue stream. If on one July, if that was basically close the door completely, okay? I don't know that this has to be part of the conversation, then the budget has to reflect, okay, that dramatic change. Unless you set a different date, uh, maybe implementation, maybe in the fall, maybe next year, unless you put that in the budget. You have to comp, you have to compute what that impact's going to be and what the impact both on the revenue stream is going to be as well as the expense. And that has to be reflected in the budget. We okay with that? Okay.
With that being said, there's a couple of ways that we can handle that. Because we have the budget next week for the tentative or the approval. Um, but also know that the budget is a, is a breathing document that we can always come back. Even if we came and adopted it, we can always make those adjustments necessarily later. Are you okay with that?
And once those adjustments are made, can we look at the other things, the other asks that we didn't? The police, the fire, the, the whatever else there, there are. I mean, that's one thing that pained me is. I, I spent several hours now in the fire department on Saturday hosting um. The Rotary Club International from Layton, from Salt Lake and from Columbia. Uh, we had three calls go out. We emptied the station, but there was one more asset there that if they would have had one more employee and we would have had a call, we could have rolled that asset. But if there would have been another call, we're now relying on Riverdale or we're relying on Clinton. And so, and you know, when I talk to firefighters, they can't take time off because they're on mandatory um, callback. When I talk to police officers, they can't get time for training, they can't get time off for vacation. We spent a lot of money to keep those people. We need to make sure that we're continuing to work through that. Maybe we'll get some more money from Weber County to, to fund a couple, but I think we've got to be able to look at ways to fund. A couple of firefighters and, and a, a minimum of two to three police officers. And so, once the budget all balances out, when this all washes out, where do we stand?
Well, here's eh, it's a.
And I'm not against the truth in taxation to, to at least keep up with, with a percentage of inflation, five, six percent.
Well, and, and that's the conversation. The question's going to right now is you got, you're on, you got on the table right now, six hundred thousand dollars for five police officers and patrol car. You got on the, on the agenda right now, nine additional firefighters uh, to cover all three shifts.
And that's three per shift. In talking to them, they could get by just now with one per shift. That would allow them to roll all of our assets and still be able to give people time off, so.
So you're talking, if you look at the firefighters and you look at the police officers and only three of the firefighters. Uh, instead of being one point four million dollars, you're probably close to. Probably close to about ninety, nine hundred.
Even if we did three and three, I mean, I, I know I'd love, I'd love to give everything they asked for, but reality says, I don't know that we're going to get it right now.
Then, then the number is more than likely, if you take that from, from with the fourteen uh, police officers and firefighters. Down to six, literally cutting that in half, then you're taking, you're looking at a budget estimate, more than likely is right on seven hundred thousand dollars.
So what is the, what is the net effect of when this all winds down? And do we still have to do a truth in taxation?
Well, it, it, it kind of goes with the idea that simply says is that, is that what are you willing as a council to give up? To ensure there's enough money to be able to provide for three officers and three firefighters. Right now, the part of that obviously would be if you shut the complex down. Then the challenge would be is there'll be money roll out of that. But remember, five hundred thousand dollars of that seven hundred thousand dollar expense is personnel.
Which is an ongoing.
Right.
It's all, if, if your decision is shut the complex down, I'm going to take the three full-time employees and. You release all the part-time employees, but you take the three full-time employees that are there and you reallocate those to other positions within the city. You can do that if they meet the qualification requirements.
Well, we have positions that we can't fill right now. We also have lifeguard position we can't fill. How many can, would they be willing to move from the complex to the aquatic center and then open back up on Sundays?
I would think that if it's a job opportunity, whether it's in the aquatic center or whether it's in the complex, it's probably not a big difference for them because it's still a good job. I, I just think the question's going to be is, is that what to do about the three full-time employees? If the three full-time employees, okay, can be reallocated somewhere else in the city. Then, then you're just redistributing those, those dollars to some other organization and you can free up about five hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue. I say five hundred thousand because, because there's a three hundred thousand dollar net revenue stream that you're going to lose. And then you're going to take the seven hundred thousand dollar expenses and you're going to take all of those expenses out. So about the net difference would be is you probably realize about five hundred thousand.
It's actually mayor, three hundred and eighty thousand.
Three hundred and eighty?
The, the, the number is three hundred and eighty thousand dollars if the full-time employees are kept. Eh, eh, there's also going to be variables if, if we get to that point where we're going to need additional money for lifeguard training. Eh, and, and what I mean by that is. We, we've taught fourteen lifeguard classes this year. Uh, each lifeguard class is twenty-seven hours, about seventeen of that is in the pool. Uh, if we have to rent out pool space, it's a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Which would, those figures would be about seventeen thousand dollars in change the, for lifeguard training at that point in time. The other option would be to open the aquatic center up earlier and we could maybe stockpile them. But still talking with Ross that, that would, if we opened it up a month earlier, that might be twenty thousand dollars we'd spend in utility costs. It's hard to say because, tell me what the temperature is going to be and I'll tell you what our utility cost would be.
Well, and, and I, like I say, I, I want to try to find every way possible to keep programs and keep people. And so, do we open up a little earlier? Do we stay open a little later, two nights a week? If we can staff and, and we can get Sunday back, probably not going to run programs on Sunday, but you know, couple of nights a week, can we do water aerobics? Couple of nights a week or, or whatever. I, I know we've rent, I don't know what the income is on rental versus if we. Move some of our programs into that during that time. Our fees.
What is a rent, what is a rental a night for the?
Seven hundred Tuesday through Thursday, fi- a thousand Friday and Saturday, and those numbers are going to have to go up. Um, once we did the part-time wages, we knew those numbers were going to have to go up. Unfortunately, we did the part-time wages in March, the place is already booked. You know, it was over and we didn't feel good about calling people up and say, hey, instead of you paying seven hundred, you're going to have to pay twelve hundred now. Those, those numbers frankly speaking will have to increase. That being said, you know, eh, eh, it's. What to increase them to, we haven't put pen to paper on that though, you know, um.
So if we shut the complex down, we could just turn it over to Roy Hyde?
No.
No?
Well, we don't know. No, no, well, we don't know. Here's, here's the problem. The building becomes a liability. And, and the school district has not managed or budgeted to basically pick up the extra personnel they're gonna need to manage. And more than likely, it's probably not going to be made available to the public. It's a syndicated, it's a school building.
Right.
And as a result of that, it really would be just absorbed into the, the, the school district. My first impression is this. If the decision is to, to close the aquatic, close the complex on one July, just give an arbitrary date. It will take the school district probably the rest of the summer to figure out if they wanna be party to it.
Well, the athletic director's just texting and said he wants it.
And, and he can, he can come in, but there's like, there will be a cost.
Is the building superintendent want it though? That's, I would love to give it to the athletic director.
But here's the key. The key would be is just like everything else, there may have to be a transition period. There may have to be a caretaker responsibility. But i- if the decision's going to be made that Roy City is going to close the door, then the question's got to be presented to the school district. Cause they're the likely recipients of that. Whether we sell it to them for a dollar or we just simply donate it, it's a public entity. I mean, we could do a couple of things to make that happen. But by doing so, it will shut down public access. It has to. So then it just becomes a resource to the school and the school district then would have to staff to manage that.
Well, and then it, there's other variables. So what do we do with the pass holders?
Yeah, like I say, it's not to, that's just right Travis. Here's the other parts of the conversation we haven't talked about. We haven't talked about the people that have lifetime memberships. Those lifetime memberships, the city will have to compensate. Whether you compensate them by just giving back all the money that they paid when they bought the lifetime membership, or when I would you basically give them, uh, access to the boss and we just pay their yearly dues to boss.
Or we give them access to the aquatic center for the rest of their lives.
Yeah, i- if that's why they're there, but remember the pool is only one component. There are people that I know that don't use the pool, but they like the weightlifting room and stuff. So it, it's hard to, hard to understand exactly.
Hey, and I'm gonna comment on that. I've had memberships and just because they closed down didn't mean I got my money back. And did not mean that they had to take me someplace else and it did not mean I lost out, like.
Agreed. The, the challenge, and, and that's absolutely true. And Andy will probably have to weigh in on that is, but as a municipal, a public municipality, this, are we in a different environment because of that? Private sector has some rules by bankruptcy that they can strip themselves of a lot of the expenses. This is not necessarily a bankruptcy as much. It just simply says we're not gonna do it anymore. And, and it might, it might put us in a legal issue that we simply says, uh, to try to do this. And, and the reason why I think we just need to look at it and try to find a fair assessment to that is because people may not necessarily like the idea, but they're gonna be very bitter if they find out that they got, they've got, they paid for a membership and they no longer can use it. So we have to just look at the, the politics of that and what makes sense. I don't think it's gonna be that much. But I do think there's, there's a compensation has to be done.
Well, and, and another thing we can tap into, Diane, I just got thinking about programs for, for youth is, we're part of the Community that Cares Coalition. They've got a ton of money right now that they're trying to figure out how to give away before the end of the, the budget year. Can that money be used for other programs or to help supplement different things?
Yeah, maybe, um, infrastructure at the complex.
I saw that one coming. It's like, where are you going?
I, I have, I am truly trying to find ways to make up for what we're going to lose.
But you know, actually, I mean, that is a point. I think that there are actually some, uh, avenues out there that we haven't checked into in regards to even sponsorships, in regards to other sorts of things. And so maybe they wouldn't do the actual infrastructure, but maybe that money would go towards something else. So then that money could be shifted over to infrastructure.
Maybe we could get some corporate sponsors. Maybe the halls would donate, you know, few hundred thousand dollars. I, I would ask them in a minute.
Well, you know, I think you're right, Joe. There are some things that we could start, um, checking into.
I think the conversation just starts now.
Well, now let's make sure we understand where the conversation's gonna end. Because, because we have to get a budget in front of you a week from today. And you gotta approve that. And if in that budget, your decision is we're gonna close down the complex, we gotta know that decision. If the decision is let's hold our breath and let's work through some options, we're okay with that.
Well, when I'd say work through options is what else can we do? Um, where can we utilize the employees that are there? What other programs can we develop along the way? It, it's, it's, uh, it's still the conversation of unwinding the complex.
Yeah, okay. So, so at least three council members are saying is, regardless of how this rolls out, the position really needs to be is, is it's, it's a, it's a money pit and we just need to close the door on the, on the complex. If that's the going in, approve, that will be the going in approved vote, then, then it's the impact of that decision that you're talking about needs to be addressed. Is that what I'm hearing? Meaning is, what do we do with the people? How do we work with the school district? All the other nuances that go with that. But I'm, I'm sensing that it really is close the complex. And then the other part of the conversation would be is then we can work out the details of how to deal with that closing.
What, you know, according to all the people, the older people that are lifetime members or, or any of them very well see. That would be willing.
I don't know. I, 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 I'm willing to talk to anyone or do anything I do, but I, I don't, I, I don't. Those are the, the same experienced individuals in the city that we're about ready to raise the tax for if we keep it open.
No, but there are people that, you know, that have a lot of money. They're looking for ways to donate.
But we're not a charitable organization. We would have to.
Kevin, let's start a GoFundMe account for the complex. You've used that example before. I figured that.
And, and I, I, I agree. I, I'll talk to anybody or, or do whatever I.
Okay, so, so. Here, here's what I'm, here's what I'm sensing, okay? And, and Amber, I, I don't disagree with your logic, but even if we had a donor that basically says we'll pay all the extra cost. If the city council votes on a budget that simply says close it, then it's the staff's responsibility to move to close that complex. And, and, and unless I hear a change in that position, Matt and Amber, we have no choice but to make that officially part of the budget. That the city will move, that work out all the nuances, move to close the complex. And what's the implications of that? Certainly within the budget on the general fund, there's going to be a revenue impact. You've already got it in there. I've seen the numbers and there's going to be a expense impact. It doesn't exist. Now, my very will be the recommendation come out, we need a three-month period. So we need to keep some of that in there, but, but the budget for the council will approve has to basically say that they're approving the closing of the complex. It, it has to. Okay.
So, you've read the paper all the time about the Marshall White Center and how they. So what if we go to close this and it's gonna be like the Motor View Drive-In and we have all these people?
So now we're listening to people that are doing internet-based surveys. Okay.
No, I mean, I, I just know that there's gonna be an uproar.
No, I, I don't think it's interview. I mean, they're, they're real people. I mean, they, they're real.
Senior citizens that we're trying to, mainly trying to keep it open for are the ones we're about ready to raise their taxes if we do keep it open. And they're the ones that we constantly hear are on a fixed income and they don't even want a five-dollar water increase. That's just a pass through. There is three hundred and fifty-five monthly pass Roy residents, three hundred and fifty-five people at the complex of the forty thousand people that, that live in Roy.
No, I, I don't, I, I, and, and maybe I should have went over this a little bit more. The add-on persons are, are, are included in there. We have it to be not the senior citizens. I can't really give you a number for, but, but it's closer to thirteen hundred.
Still, thirteen hundred of the forty thousand people.
Sure, and, 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 and I, I would say this, of, of the people that come daily or, or pay daily admission, which is annually about twenty-two thousand, we don't have May and June's on there. I would say ninety percent of them are Roy residents. You know, um, I, I know, I know there's other communities that use it. I, I don't dispute that. There's other communities that play baseball here. There's other communities that. All, all sorts of stuff, but, but I do know that there are, there are thousands of Roy people who use this quite often.
Why would you say if we do vote to shut it down? And so, and then we have repercussions of people and, and then there, and then we do find money to open it, you know, might we find some donors? Is, is that something you can revisit or do or is it just done deal?
Here's, no, no, here, here's, here's how the process works. Certainly, depending on what we talk about in terms of truth, tax, truth and taxation, was he hold that session or not? Next Tuesday, the public has a note, comes to the meeting. No question about it. This is the focus of this attention. If the budget basically comes in and says we're taking the revenue stream down to zero, we're taking the expenses down to zero going into next year. So it'll be pretty evident with some wording in there that simply says the decision by approving this budget is close complex. The public should be coming to the meeting. And they should walk in the meeting and talk to the council about their concerns, both pros and cons before the votes taken. They, that's, that's how the process works. Cause it is that vote that makes that determinate. This is all talk right now. I don't know what public opinion is in terms of that. I will tell you on this topic. But I will tell you, you have a truth and taxation meeting and you're talking about putting a thirty-seven percent property tax increase. You will have a stream of people who will stand in front of that pulpit in front of you. And they will tell you to their face, as they told me to my face, they simply will say, you're talking about me losing my house or basically paying my utility or paying for my medicine or paying for my food. They're on a fixed income.
Right, that's why we would never do it thirty.
And that's a really hard conversation to have because I think it causes a lot of the emotional issues to come out in terms of what the council has to do in terms of approving the truth and taxation increase. But, but it is those, the principle, it was those reasons that it's important that the truth and taxation basically occur. Because it needs an opportunity for the public to come to the council one-on-one and say, here's my concerns with your decision. Either way, there could be fifty people in that room next Tuesday that simply says, I want that complex closed. I've been tired of paying for that. There could be fifty people walking and says, I don't wanna close that. All that has to be weighed into the conversation. But at the end of the day, I'm gonna call for a vote. Brittany's going to basically do a roll call vote. At the end of the day, we're either gonna approve that budget or not. My only concern with this conversation was, Matt and Amber, whatever we decide in terms of going from here, that budget has to reflect that. Otherwise, if we go up there and say, it, we're gonna leave it as it is, we can do that. And two days after that, we can do a budget amendment and close it. Okay? I would much rather have that conversation done as we are now, be part of the budget. So we're going in on the budget that says this is our plan. We need that because what we have not got to yet and is yet to come is that I'm hearing some say, we need three firefighters. We need three police officers. It's gonna cost us seven hundred thousand dollars to pay for that. Then we have to have a conversation how we're gonna pay for those.
Every year.
Every year, right. And that's a conversation needs to happen. So i- it's best to do it now while we can.
So I think people would be willing to have a small tax increase for public safety and.
There's the point, right. And your position my very will be, your position my very will be to simply say, I'm willing to support a truth and taxation meeting for a small amount of money because it's going to go directly to pay for public safety. And, and interestingly enough, most people that I've sent through those meetings were at the county level or in the city. Most people will tell you they will small, they will support a small tax increase if it goes to public safety.
So you're talking, so if we did like eighteen percent or something? I mean, twenty percent's eight hundred thousand.
Yeah, the numbers he gave us, the numbers he gave us was, we could get to fifteen percent, eighteen percent would give us, you know, property tax increase enough to pay for three officers and three firemen due to that. And if, and if your position, which is as a council, is I'm willing to, to say, I'm gonna ask the, the, the residents to pay forty-eight dollars more a year.
So that percentage, does that include anything that we're making back out of the complex?
No, no, because.
And, and see, that's where I say. I, I wanna see, and I know that puts a lot on them and, and maybe we move forward with not funding police and fire at the moment. But the commitment is, once we figure out what this looks like, then we come back in and do adjustment. I still think we need to do a truth in taxation. I, I wouldn't, I mean, me personally, I know five percent doesn't get us much, but two hundred thousands to me is better than nothing. On top of what we're gonna get back out of the complex. That could, that could potentially get us close to seven hundred thousand dollars between the complex and a five.
Maybe you have to run those numbers, right?
Well, I'm, I could say something, like, if we close the complex, I don't wanna say we immediately have this money.
I know, that's why I said, we can't, we can't bring on people right now. It's, we've gotta let this.
Right, and that's why we're, I, I, I would say we look at it at the mid-year budget review. At the mid, cause we would, and, and I would hope at that point.
That long, I, I'd say, cause your truth in taxation is September.
Right.
But like he's saying, it's gonna take him, he's got a trained lifeguard somewhere else and that's gonna come at a cost. I think there's gonna be unforeseen costs come up that we aren't aware of. Maybe even with closing it and something. So I don't wanna say like, yes, we have all this money available. Let's take maybe a year and try to get a good feel for what those costs are before we're ready to spend them again.
Well, and on, on the flip side too, from a, um, fire side, from the fire side of the house, we have the county doing their assessment right now, correct? The, and will, what, what are we projected chief on, on when we're gonna have those results back in terms of the study?
It'll be, it'll be October, November and implementation in January if any changes.
And that, that's what, so basically, can you articulate what that is? Basically, let me see if I can and then correct me if, if I'm incorrect. Basically, they're doing a, with all the development that's gone out on the west side, they need a, um, a rig to be able to service those people down on that side. Um, and we are the only at thirty-two, the only dispatchable unit that's close enough to the developments that are out there. And so there's potentially, uh, county money that they would take and provide for us to basically staff a rig. Correct me if I'm wrong.
So, uh, very close. They're doing a standard to cover for the paramedic program for the ALS delivery within Weaver County. Uh, currently, uh, northwest and mostly the south is under, underserved for the paramedic service because Roy is pretty much the only south end and then the next one closest is Rescue Five upon Harrison. So that's your, that's your delivery for the south end. We're pretty much us and sixty-one are the only thing on the west side and there's nothing up in north. So in order to meet the time, they have to meet a seven-minute requirement. Uh, PM, the paramedic, uh, standard to cover will show where those deficiencies are. Thirty-two is position, thirty-one, we have a reserve rescue all ready to go. We just, if we get the thumbs up, we basically would be staff it with two, two additional and we, we would cover the south and, and the southwest with that piece. That's a projection on my side of the house, but the numbers are, are, are really what we're waiting to come back. That would be an additional four hundred and fifty, four-ten to four-fifty additional a year to help offset the cost of the personnel and stuff.
Okay, okay. So what you're saying then chief, just make sure we have a further record. Is that we're only talking about paramedic service?
We're only talking paramedic service.
That's just, yes. So it's just an additional unit that would be.
House to be able to provide additional paramedic service and you would need at least two shifts to be able to support that?
Well, we, we'd need three.
So six people.
Six people. Or.
And they'll fund that?
You expect them to fund all that?
So they give us four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of, of the rest is our piece to, to match up to. They give us currently, they give us.
Six, six is, six is roughly a hundred thousand dollars a piece. So it's six hundred, so we're a hundred and fifty short. If they give us four fifty, we're a hundred and fifty short. Which we could make up.
Well, there's, there's other costs and that hundred and fifty is, is the, the revenue that you make up with the addition paramedic.
Yeah, that's true.
But here, I, I know where you're leading and I, and I, and that's great information now in terms of trying, trying to provide public safety. The chief gave you the book. If you had a chance to really look through the book, let me just, let me just point out one thing. The chief can fill in the, the details if I miss something. Here's the other part of the book and it was really a powerful statement here. He says in the book on fire suppression, he says, they responded in twenty-twenty-one to fifty-six building fires within Roy or surrounding communities. So fifty-six of them. And those were in direct support where we now put not just the paramedics, but we put the fire engines into play. Is that reasonable statement? Okay, then he says, which I thought was an interesting comment. Let me just share what he says in the other part of the report. He says Roy City had twenty-two documented working fires. So there were fifty-six working fires that the city had to respond to between. So there were fifty six working fires that the city had to respond to between Roy City. And the surrounding areas, in which case twenty two of those were in Roy. So our interlocal agreements that we have allowed then our public safety team. To now go to other surrounding areas and provide support to a working fire by definition in the book. If you kinda look at the numbers. Forty, and and we're going, just the difference between fifty six and twenty two, you got the count? We're talking about thirty four, thirty four of the fires that our team had to respond to. Were not in Roy City.
How many of those fires that we responded to did another agency respond to? Cause there was one in our neighborhood of a well-known person, that one of the trucks sitting there was a Clinton fire truck, cause it was, it was yellow, it didn't match our colors.
Likely because our team was responding to some other, some other fire in some other community. And the chief has said over and over again, we do not staff to have the capacity. To be able to match and meet all of the demands, okay? We just don't do it, so we have to rely upon each other. And surely the nine one Weaver district does that. But the majority of the fires that our fire truck basically went out and supported, we didn't get paid for. We provide that service as part of our interlocal agreements. Unlike the paramedic service, which the county pays for, those we do not provide. So the hard question, and and this is gonna be a hard question anytime you have this conversation. Is that our taxpayers, our residents are paying for that service, and our assets are being used to provide that service. And that's just how it is. Now.
But I think that's pretty commonplace.
Every city back and forth, every.
Any big city is gonna have that responsibility, cause they're big. Hopper doesn't have that problem. Cause Hopper doesn't have a requirement. They draw upon the county to provide that service. I can give you city after city after city. In fact, there's probably about thirteen of them. That simply buys that service from the county. But because the big dog in the fight, the big elephant in the room basically has those resources. We are providing those resources at the Roy City residents' expense. And that's a fact. And there's a cost associated with that. So just recognize the fact is, is that when we start looking at how we're going to want to expand. I ask you to seriously think about in terms of all the monies that we're spending providing public safety. It is not public safety just for Roy.
It's, and it's not just, it's not just fire and paramedics, it's, it's police too. How many times do we respond, respond outside of our city?
And to that end, we rely on them to respond to us, but as they, we have the luxury right now of being staffed. Our reliance on other agencies is going down because they're not.
And I've run the numbers, and the numbers basically are very clear. Roy City provides more support in public safety out of Roy City than we get from other organization into Roy City. It's a consequence of being the big dog in the fight. But there's a cost associated with that. And so when I get residents basically saying, says, what are we doing here? Why are we spending so much money for public safety when I can look at Clearfield and I look at these other cities that are comparable in size? And they say that they pay a fraction of that. Well, I tell them this, first thing is, Clearfield may have a fire station sitting in this building. But the fact of the matter is, they don't own it. It's owned by the county. And they get the same service, okay? And it's not found in their general fund. Those revenues are not calculated there. More than likely, they're on a separate taxing entity, and they're being funded by a whole different group of board. A whole different of the city councils don't have to worry about paying for that.
North Davis Fire District.
They, that's a different board and they're di- different taxing entity. So just recognize, every time we talk public safety. We're talking about more opportunities than only provide service to our people. But you're also providing everybody else, and there's an incredible cost associated with that. And we're not getting reimbursed for a lot of that.
But there's nothing we can do about it.
Oh, yes, there is.
Get rid of your interlocal agreements and hope like hell we don't need their help.
Right. The laissez faire.
And the mayor's alluding to a district, and then basically the district will cost the citizens. Basically about a million dollars per station, more than they're paying right now. And they'll still have to pay the P M A fee, and you'll lose all your assets to the district. So the, the, the buildings and.
We lose control of it.
Everything will go there, including revenue.
But control, and that's, that's the reason why most of them don't. Is because the city council simply don't wanna lose control. No matter what it costs, they don't wanna lose control. So what you see things spread up because it comes down to costs, it says that's why we're gonna have a unification. That's the reason why we pull all these city assets together, and and you build these separate districts. It's not found in our tax rate. It's not found that you, we would not have this conversation if it was in a district. They would have a board that would manage that, and they would be the ones standing with truth and taxation to compensate, not you. But the single biggest expense in this city, in the general fund, is public safety. Single to everything. And I only bring it to your point, the big piece of that expense is providing public safety to everybody else. If you don't think that bothers me, this is about the fifth time I've had this conversation.
I'm sure it doesn't. As soon as we shut down and go to a district, you talk to, you look at response times in a district versus what we have in the city. So we unwind our police, we unwind our fire, we go to, we go to districts, you're not gonna get the same level of service we have.
Yeah.
So are the, are the residents, well, we're already, we're already hearing, at least on the police side of it, that the response times and 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 all that. That we're stressed because of staffing and and things like that. So now all of a sudden. You go talk to the people from Weaver County, I guarantee you, our guys are gonna get to West Haven before Weaver County does. So as soon as we rely on a district, we're in the same situation.
Well, Joe, I would just indicate to you is, is that maybe that's the case, but I'm a data guy. Show me the data. If the bottom line is, is the seven minute response time is is not working in in these districts. Because how the districts is, then you got a good argument. But if you got a basically a district dispatch sitting in the middle of West Haven and think there's two of them out there. Wouldn't you believe that those two stations would be responsive, just like they are for us in West Haven? Cause they're sitting right there in West Haven.
I don't know, I, I bet your guys are quicker to West Haven than they are, and there's a fire district right there in West Haven.
And what does that say about the problem? Okay, are they not undermanned? Or what's, what's happening?
Potentially, but as soon as you unwind that and we go to the same way they are, now all of a sudden we lessen the rate of service to our people.
Okay, that's what you believe. What's the data show? I'm only asking the harder question is. I'm only asking the hard question because this is a conversation about the potential of raising property taxes. Because that's the only way we're gonna be able to fund it. And every time you basically go up there and raise taxes, then it impacts employee, impacts residents on a different level. And I'm saying to you is, is that it's not going to stop. Ogden is now pursuing it. You can bet probably by January, February, the public safety will be back in here saying we're losing more people. We gotta do with that. So here's my comment, okay? Make sure we understand where we're going with this conversation. We're talking about closing the compact, complex. Amber basically made this comment. She simply says she needs a little bit of time so we can flush out all of the criticalities of the impact of that. Do you wanna wait, or do you just basically wanna close? And we pick up the pieces and figure what we're gonna do? Because it's all about the timing in terms of how we move on this. Because if you're anticipating needing to save some money by shutting down the complex to pay for the demands of public safety. Then the timing is critical here. Because if they're gonna make this work, they can't have a plan that's going to start next year at the same time. I think those public safety people are gonna step up and say, hey, I need to make this happen between now and January. I need to make this happen between now and November. Otherwise.
I think that's the time we give to start unwinding things, and then we reconvene a discussion of. How do we move forward once we've unwinded the complex? But I still think, the one thing I, I think is still important about a truth and taxation, and and if I was to say up to five percent or something. Granted, the reason, I I don't totally agree with it, but the reason taxes went up thirty seven percent was because. How many years had it been since a tax increase? So the one thing I heard from councils after that for the first little while is. Is they should have been doing a little bit along the way, so you don't have a big sting. How many years is it since we did that thirty seven percent tax increase?
Six or seven.
Yeah, five, six.
And so if you did two percent along the way, you could have been ten to twelve percent right now.
I'm not saying, that's your choice, council, you have that option. I'm just saying is, is that I think Amber's point would be is we need to figure out, have time. To be able to look at all the nuances in terms of this decision, and then make a decision. So unless you tell me otherwise, this is what I think I'm hearing from you. Let's plan to put in the budget to close the complex. Timing, we'll work the timing. It sounds like, unless you tell me otherwise, I need voices on this side of the room. Are you willing to do a possible truth and taxation at a lower amount? Amber gave us some numbers, a five, a ten, a fifteen, and a twenty percent. Would you, would you be willing to have a truth and taxation meeting? Cause she needs to know that as well. If we're going to do that, we have to make that declaration that we're making a, a, a budget and not judge, judgment. More than likely, I think sometime before this, about the sixteenth of August, where we'll do a truth and taxation where we could. Not necessarily will, but we could basically do a truth and taxation, well, a truth and taxation, but we could adjust the uh, the rate.
Well, I believe that question's a little premature. I believe that we still need to discuss, um, you know. First of all, Randy brought the idea of let's wait until January. Why don't we see where ourselves tax is coming in? Because there's a really good chance that it's gonna be coming in like we think it is, and we're gonna have a better idea. I believe that, you know, we need to still discuss the economic development director position. I believe that should be discontinued. I don't believe this is the right timing for that. I don't believe that we are going to get the um, the benefit and input from that. Now for sure, and I'm not sure if and when. So I believe that the tax and true, you know, the truth and taxation needs to come up, but. I still think we need to have a little bit of in discussion in regards to, to timing and. Of more information and data before we just jump in and. Uh, and and go for possible big numbers. And I don't believe that that part has been discussed.
Well, okay, so, okay, here's, that's a, that's a good point. I think the point would be is Amber was suggesting, if you wanna do a truth and taxation. She's gotta put that in the budget, and we've gotta make that decision next week. And we gotta set a time, percent, ten percent, fifteen percent, whatever that is.
Up to the most you possibly you wanna do.
I would say up fifteen.
Okay, so if you say fifteen percent going in, that you can adjust that from fifteen to zero when we finally get into the meeting. You have that choice. But but Amber and I need to know, are you, were you willing to basically consider a property tax increase? And I would definitely suggest to you that you couch it with public safety. If you couch it to anything else, the public is not going to like it.
Well, and tha- that's what we're faced with the left. I mean, that's the biggest left of the ask is public safety.
Yes, so you need to tell her a number, that we planned for that in the meeting. And then we're preparing then to have another meeting on the sixteenth to do a truth and taxation to finalize that, as she said. It could be zero. It could be sixteen or whatever number you choose. But you need to tell her if you're interested in basically going forward with the truth and taxation meeting.
So do we all have to agree on a number tonight in order to do that?
She needs to know.
We need something.
You can always vote lower.
Yeah, I say, I say ten.
If I put in five and then you guys wanna vote ten, you can't. Only forty eight dollars and sixty cents a year.
Forty eight dollars a year on fifteen or thirty two dollars a year on.
Well, what, what, it was forty eight dollars, right?
I, I'd say no more than ten, that's where I hold.
For less than thirteen cents a day, you two can adopt a firefighter and police officer.
I think I got Diane's point, because we still have to get to the other parts of this we haven't got to, which is gonna go.
Ten percent was thirty two dollars a year.
Thirty two, right.
Cause again, we, we have to take into consideration, we can't come down, we can't go up.
I wouldn't vote more than anyway, so.
She said fifteen.
Then we could always come down if we need to, but that's six, that's.
Randy?
Ten, 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 give me fifteen, fifty, many, give me fifteen, give me a fifteen. And like I said, that just gives us wiggle room. That's all I'm basing it off of. No, I, I'm not comfortable with fifteen. Ten would be the absolute max.
So then why don't you say ten? Cause as soon as you throw a number out there, people.
Cause I just talked to my, both my daughters that live in Roy right before I came to this, telling them we are gonna vote on this. And talk about it, and I said, would you be willing to pay forty eight dollars more a year? And they said, heck yeah, what? Forty eight dollar, I spend more of that on Maverick in two weeks, you know, I mean. For public safety, cause I told them everything that was on the table for everything. And they're like, I can't imagine one person complaining about forty eight dollars a year.
They're gonna complain. I know, I know, so you got four fifteens and.
Amber?
Fifteen it is, put it out there.
Okay, so let me summarize. Fifteen percent, okay, consideration for property tax increase, that's what you said. Close the complex, but we need to kind of work out the details on how that's gonna happen. It may take a little more time than we thought.
When does the truth and taxation meeting happen?
Sixteenth of August. Diane, you put on the table a couple more interesting things that need to be discussed. First. Do we wanna spend a hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars for a community director?
No.
Okay, and. You haven't brought it up, but certainly a conversation that could be brought up. Cola, two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars for cola. You just gave, okay, the entire workforce a one point five million dollar, almost a two million dollar uh bonus. You're now gonna go back in, and you're going to give them the merit increase anywhere from two to two point five percent. And it's for twelve step, uh, three point seven five percent.
How much did you say Ogden's just increasing their wages?
Yeah, so don't we have to?
We, we have to, I mean, I mean, we're not even competitive with what we're, yeah, we're not even competitive with what we're even looking to raise.
After basically getting some people up to thirty percent increase.
There's a voice in the crowd that's a department head.
Go. Sheriff Arvin called me last night. I know that they're doing work on something right now. I don't know what it is, I don't know what it looks like. All he would tell me is he wanted to know what our previous starting wage was prior to our increase.
Tell him I'm not putting a sign in my yard now.
Just throwing that out there. I don't have any details other than that.
The coal is just to keep up, yeah.
I think that brings up a really good point. We need to take care of what we have. We start extending ourselves with. Three or four or six or nine more people. We're, we're running a race right now. We can't even take care of what we have. We already are down people in the fire department. So I think that we have to be very cautious, and we better find out what's happening with ourselves tax revenue before making, make those sorts of. Decisions for increasing staff that we're now going to in perpetuity have to be paying colas or increases and that sort of thing. You know, we're getting ourselves into a, a possible real bind. And, and we're not talking about a ten percent increase to try to cover some of that. You know, I think we need to give it uh, some time and plan ahead, and if we have a little extra, great, put it, put it aside so we can take care of. This, the wonderful staff that we already have, and not let them, you know, run off to other cities again.
And so I, I think without speaking for you, Diane, uh, she's still struggling in terms of hiring six more additional people. And for public safety, she's basically supporting Cola. Cause she wants to retain the people we have at the level that we need to retain them, okay? I'm sensing from the rest of you, keep the two percent Cola in the conversation, okay? The things that maybe you wanna consider is you're gonna spend roughly about five hundred thousand dollars in vehicles. Let me be specific. Uh, and, and chief, please, uh, you about talk about patrol cars. I'm talking about three administrative vehicles, a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars for police. Two vehicles for public works administration, a hundred thousand dollars. Community development director's truck, fifty thousand dollars, and park and recreation director vehicles, a hundred thousand.
Alright, so I got two hands in the back. We'll go with Chief Quinn first, cause yours was up, and then we'll hit Ross. Ready, go. What you, yeah, did?
We can't budget for the.
Can't budget for the flipping of our cars that we're being, we're doing.
But I can tell you right now, we're printing money at the auction selling cars.
Oh, I just traded in my four, three-year-old van for twenty eight thousand dollars. I paid thirty four thousand dollars for it three years ago.
It's the way city budgets that you can't budget the difference, cause right now we budget the difference. We're printing money.
They don't consider that, it's, you can't get to a balanced budget, okay? If with that.
So it's a, it's a fallacy. So it's an, it's a, it's a fallacy because the money will come to put it back. And I don't know how you.
We, we, we can't from a gap perspective, we can't account for the revenue that we're gonna get from the resale of the vehicles, correct?
Idea is that the revenue we receive would pay for the next year.
That's the logic, but in, in the budget.
If we don't get the money, we would not.
On balance or whatever.
Well, we would or not buy them.
We wouldn't buy.
If we have the revenue to buy them from the previous year.
And then, and then Chief Quinn.
If I may, I want to take a step back. You, if you could hear what the employees are saying about what happened last year, right, I know in the police department, that is the one thing, the, the action that you took as a body that got us fully staffed. They are watching. I guarantee you there are people online listening to this tonight. They are waiting in anticipation to see what's gonna happen because of what previous city councils have done. I am confident that I know firsthand. Our officers are our best recruiting tool and they are being utilized. So we actually have advocates in our PD that have been here for five, ten years. We have advocates in our PD that have been here for six months because they came from other places where they didn't feel like they were being taken care of. So I just want you to know that.
Well, my only comment would be is said, I think you have five police officer vehicles in the budget, but you've also got three administrative vehicles. I didn't understand what the administrative vehicles were.
So those three administrative vehicles are for Chief Gwen and then the two captains. They have current administrative vehicles right now, so if they get these in the budget, they will sell those off and Amber will do a budget adjustment for the next year's money. So we take that out and we put in a capital projects fund to hold that money and that's the rotation.
Matt, are you, have you got a vehicle today?
I do, yes.
You gotta help me, Matt.
It's the revenue side that is lacking.
I understand that part of it. You've got the previous chief's vehicle sitting out there. We drove it the other day.
Yes, that was not part of the, the rotation. So we could sell that. No, that is the Accord that they're using for a pool.
That's right now being used as a pool car. So our civilian staff use that for training and travel. Our officers use that for training and travel to reduce the mileage on their vehicles. Plus those pool cars like the Honda get better gas mileage than their pursuit vehicles.
Okay.
Yeah, so when we were down in St. George at that police meeting, they drove that vehicle down there, the Honda Accord.
Okay, well, uh, what I show, share with you is about half a million dollars worth of vehicles, all administrative. The challenge is, Amber, unless you tell me otherwise, the, the way the accounting system works, you can't plan for or budget for a pre, a sale of a vehicle to be revenue generating to compensate. So either you leave these vehicles in there and absorb the five hundred thousand with the intuitive understanding that when you sell the vehicles, you'll gain at least five hundred thousand dollars back. Or you take them out of the budget so you can bring the budget number down and redirect those dollars to something else. Like the five police officers that are being asked for, or the three or six or nine firefighters. I'm just trying to get us to the budget and then how we choose to work the budget after the execution, after it's approved, we'll come through some.
Or you can't budget for the sale of it. That's the fallacy because the money will be there and if it's not there, then you don't replace them the next year.
Right, so I, I could budget the revenue, but I, it's not guaranteed if we don't sell the vehicles. So I would rather wait until we actually sell the vehicles and then record the revenue and say that will pay now for next year's vehicles.
And then we put that in the capital projects fund where those five vehicles are actually taken out of.
So all of these vehicles are purchased in the capital projects fund, which can't be used for field police and fire because it's not in the general.
And, and that's assuming you even get them. And, and it took them three months to, four months to get it to me. If you get some cars like Fords, it could be a year. So we don't even know for sure. All the vehicles that we even, I can't even guarantee that all the vehicles we ordered last year, we got all the vehicles last year. But we stored it. So I, all I'm saying to you would be is in terms of the budget conversation would be is there's five hundred thousand dollars of monies that could very well be used if your intent would be is to try to figure out how to support the public safety.
And we could take that out, but we just have to know that we're not doing the vehicle rotation anymore.
At least this year.
Which, you're still printing money, rotating vehicles.
Well, I give you some short choices, okay? And I, and I'll go back to the first comment I made when we started the conversation. Council, it's your responsibility to figure out how we're gonna basically generate revenue. We just had a one point eight million dollar increase in salaries. We're talking about putting another six hundred thousand if we went with five or at least seven hundred thousand. We went with, with six new firefighters and, and police officers. And gotta come back and say, we're gonna come up with two million dollars to compensate that. And council member Wilson basically asked the most important question. We do not know where the sales tax revenue is going to be to pay for all this. We've seen the growth. I've looked at the numbers, but I'm telling you, they're shaky. And I will know when I get some new numbers, what, what we think this, whether or not we're gonna basically have the kind of revenue we're gonna need to compensate because this is the gift that keeps on giving. Once you set those salaries in, in lockstone, you pay those salaries.
Can you wait till January? I mean, can the police and fire wait and then hire more after we see our sales tax or is that?
If they knew anyone who can answer that.
That's a policy decision you're gonna have to make. I've done, I've, I've done everything that I can do. That is a policy, policy decision you'll have to make and then.
I'm paying for overtimes today. Most every time I pay mandatory overtime every day.
Then I say we don't do that, the car thing, there's five hundred thousand.
The, the car thing is actually in capital projects fund that we can't take that money back.
Yeah, we can't pull that money back.
So we'll free up five hundred thousand dollars in capital projects.
Other capital expenditures. And no, we're not using it towards the complex. So I, I saw where, I saw where your brain was going, Diane.
I'm still not happy about it, but I'm not done fighting for it.
Okay, so here's what I think we've got. I, I'm not sensing that the, that we got enough, we got enough push to basically talk about stopping, uh, uh, vehicles, although I'd have a, I have a good argument if you, if the choice is to cut off the community development director position and not hire it, then I'd find it probably not necessary that we basically buy a community development truck.
Right, sounds great, yeah.
I mean, at least that's one for one.
Yeah.
But we still gotta come up with seven hundred or whatever. And if you listen to what police chief said, Matt, I'll just, I'll just repeat what you said in the last meeting. Last meeting, the question came to you and simply says, could you take fewer? And then my impression from your comment would be is I've done all the work. I've done all the thing. I need five officers. It's the only way I'm gonna make this whole thing work so that my people can get off to take the leave they need and take the training they need on working hours. Right now, they are struggling. I mean, I read your book over and over and over again. I've marked every page. You are absolutely clear and you were pretty darn compelling to me when I read this out of your book. Violent offenses going up, traffic stops. In two thousand ten, you did nine thousand. In two thousand twenty-one, you did twenty-one hundred. These are your numbers and it seems to me that crime is increasing. And the bottom line would be is we don't have necessarily the resources in, in place to basically do the appropriate thing to keep it down. And let me just tell you, counsel, it's pretty heartwarming, okay, when you get a phone call from a person that just got their vehicle broke into. And we know personally, people that had their trucks stolen. And they probably don't have a clue where it's at. And I've seen your numbers, your charts. I mean, I thought it was happening everywhere else. But when I, and I sent you all a copy of that. It was the significant number of burglaries in big vehicles in Roy City over the, over the first six or seven months. And I was shocked. Obviously, we don't live in Mayberry anymore. If we don't have the officers patrolling the restaurants, they're gonna get vandalized. And they did.
But you just told me if we add more people that they're gonna be taking care of other cities. So are we adding people to take care of our city or other cities? You can't have it both ways.
You tell me.
No, you tell me. You're the one that just got done saying that you're tired of mutual aid going to other cities. So do we really want to expand our force? But now you're telling me we can't take care of what we have. So I, I don't know how you could have that both ways.
Well, here's the way the bottom line has to be. First thing is I said another about police officers, you brought that issue to the table.
You said public safety.
No, I'll be specific. My data talks about fire, firefighting. We get compensated for paramedic service, but we don't get compensated when we're putting out fires in other cities. The data is absolutely.
We don't get compensated to send our police officers to other cities either.
No, but I intuitively, I knew that we're also providing that service. The challenge is going to be is that's an internal policy issue. How we respond to and what we provide. The fire chief told me, he says this, I will never ever have not one of our teams in Roy. If I had ten different requirements come at me, he said, this is, I'll send out what I can, but there'll always be at least one team firefighters in Roy to fight of Roy, a Roy fire if it comes about. That's all you got. But if the decision from the council simply says change your paradigm, we're spending way too much of our time spending out fixing other people's problems where we're putting at risk our problems. Change the policy. If we're spending all our, our police officers and we're doing a lot of work for West Haven because we get a call, change the policy. Those two chiefs are the ones who sit in the, in the nine-one-one district and they set the policy requirements. If the end of the day is you don't call as much on Roy and you start calling somebody else, then do that. But they set the policy. All I'm responding to is the fact is the chief said last time he said this. He says, I don't have enough, I can't cover all of my requirements and basically be able to provide training. He says, and it's in his report, I don't have basically enough people to allow the people to take the needed time off because they have to be on the job. We have created a nightmare. We put forty officers. He's come back and says, I need forty-four or I need forty-five officers for this population. I'm only responding to what he says. And as far as the police chief or the fire chief, I read his report. He didn't go into much detail in terms of that, but he surely basically has a good argument to suggest is from the conversation, he's experiencing the same thing. Public safety, we don't have enough public safety personnel to provide adequate.
So is it a policy issue or a budget issue?
Budget in terms of people, policy in terms of how they're used. And you and I don't control that, but those chiefs do. And at the end of the day, they tell the nine-one-one district to simply says, don't call me on this one. Then don't go because we have a genuine need here. I'm telling you, this is not Mayberry anymore.
Well, no, we're gonna come up with fourteen thousand. I mean, that's six hundred thousand and then eight hundred thousand for.
Both of them have come in and asked.
Percent, that's six hundred thousand. That would take care of five police, but then.
What do you do with the rest of them?
Nine firemen.
He says he needed eight hundred thousand dollars for nine firemen. Police says, she says, I need six hundred thousand for five police officers in the vehicle. So what he said. Question is, are you gonna be able to provide that to them?
Well, I don't doubt that they are needed. That's certainly the case, but, um, I also don't doubt that we're going to be having a continued race for wage increases to just help the people that we already have. And even having more police officers, they're not gonna be there when those burglaries occur. You know, maybe there overall will be some things, but they're not gonna be able to be there to, to stop that. You know, there's some other fundamental issues probably need to come into that. So I certainly don't doubt they don't need it, but I think for the balance, we need a little more information, as I already mentioned, in regards to sales tax before we make that commitment because I prefer to take care of the police officers and the fire, uh, fighters that we have right now.
But taking care of them is allowing them to have time off. And if they can't even have time off,
That's true.
They can't go on vacation with their families. They can't take time off when they got a sick spouse or child.
Yep.
Are we truly taking care of?
So you don't wanna raise the taxes more than ten percent. Where are we gonna come up with?
No, but you take, you take, you take five to ten percent plus the difference of the complex and you've, you've got the minimum required right there.
Plus, we're potentially looking at four hundred thousand dollars that we're gonna.
Four hundred fifty.
Four hundred fifty from the county. Well, prevention is obviously part of what we want to provide, but response is also what we provide and that's what we're known for. So while we may not be able to stop all the vehicle burglaries, we will be responding to them in the morning and they come en masse. And so I'm, I'm finalizing my annual report. You just heard the fire chiefs from last year, but I'm looking at priority four calls, which would be a vehicle burglary. Cumulative time on scene on the priority four call in two thousand twenty-one was thirty-three minutes. Well, if you get six, seven, eight, nine, ten vehicle burglaries in the morning, how much time are your officers gonna be spending on those vehicle burglaries? When they could be doing something.
What percentage of those people that leave their cars unlocked?
I don't know because I don't know how many are actually getting tried.
A lot of the Ring videos I'm watching right now, car, they're not even trying to unlock cars. They're pulling on a door handle and the door opens. Unfortunately, the one person I know that had their truck stolen, the keys were setting on the floor of the truck. You just.
Yeah, it's, it's not a break and if you leave it unlocked.
Two is state requires these data reporting requirements and as reporting systems change and additional data is required, officers are spending probably two or three times the amount of time on a call now than they were ten years ago.
I get it. That's one of the things I talked about when we were down at the league.
Either doing, you know, less cop stuff and more paperwork stuff, right?
Cause we're, we're, aren't we trying to address that with some rollout of some new software? I'll cut down on some of that administrative overhead, but that's.
But what it doesn't do is it doesn't change the requirement of the data collection at the, at the, at the, at the street level.
Right.
So it doesn't change anything that patrol officer's doing as far as collecting the data. It's only gonna change the way that we're able to report it.
So to cover your shifts, you need five. To cover your shifts, you need three, minimum. What is, what does eight cost? Is it eight hundred thousand? Hundred thousand of pop? So what is, what is the net effect of what we're taking out? And what does a, a minimal tax increase look like? Does that get us there? I mean, we cut five hundred thousand dollars out of vehicles, but the thing that we're cutting out of the backend of it that we're not seeing is the income from that five hundred thousand. So if we want to back out those vehicles and purchase them right now, we can do it and fund the employees. But you're, you're just kicking the can down the road farther because there is income in them vehicles.
Basically, yeah, this is, this is an easier conversation dealing with how we're gonna do this this year. A much more difficult conversation next year. I'm only suggesting to you would be as we look at ways by which you can cut costs out. If you, if the whole premise here is simply to reduce the cost and not talk about decreasing revenue, then you look for the, the low hanging fruit.
How many vehicles was that for five hundred thousand? Were your, were your, well, those vehicles that are for those people were your world end if you don't get them?
Well, our world end if we don't get them?
Not at all, but you just wouldn't be rotating the vehicle.
You don't have to explain that to me because I'm the king of vehicle rotation. I'm the one that got the city thinking of, there's money in vehicles.
So the last vehicle we sold, I think we made like five thousand dollars on.
We're printing money. Just like the federal government.
Like a federal government.
Well, okay, so let's, let's step back just. Council member Wilson on the table would be is, do we hire the community development director? It's a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Half of that will come out of RDA funds. The other half will come out of the general fund. Diane's suggesting that we basically don't do that. Yeah?
I don't think we should either.
Sophie?
And it comes out of.
RDA.
RDA and. Which we have, how many millions is setting in RDA that just sat there?
But once you start taking it out, it's not gonna be sitting there in there. Who knows what projects are coming up with, uh.
Which is why we need somebody to manage those products. Cause that poor guy's burnt out. His hair normally doesn't look like that because we've worked the hell out of him.
Haircut, I mean, you know.
So if you don't mind, Matt.
Collectively figure out how many hours he spends with us five council members. We've taken his whole day away from him.
It's true.
So, so think about the time that we suck out of his life and he still has a whole city to run after that. When you put the mayor in there, bless his heart, that's six people. Six people. Six people have destroyed every hour he has in the day, but there's still a city to be run.
The question.
I say that with good faith, cause I'm one of the six.
What would they do? What would that developer do to help you?
Percentage wise, the economic development director would be primarily for economic development, I would say. More like a ninety-five that way and five percent administrative. The big, the big difference is, is that a lot of my my time is actually spent on economic development. Andy's also over that department. So it'd be administering administering that department, it would be like overseeing the operations. And then also taking that time away from me in that realm of economic development.
Or all your time spent dealing with things like this, then economic development's not happening.
Be more.
Managing projects and what's going on.
Projects like what?
The economic development director.
Yeah.
It would be facilitating a lot like we're using the consultant right now, but we just did that strategic plan. They would be running with that. They would be also talking to developers, things like that.
Things that slide through the crack, and then we realize as a council, oh, how do we let that happen?
Yeah, do you have time for that? Are you doing?
I have been doing quite a bit of it.
Right.
Yeah.
You always tell me you enjoy it.
I I mean, I enjoy my job generally, so it's just kinda where the city wants to go and what emphasis they wanna put into it.
Well, obviously.
I could honestly say like I I feel like I'm a better administrator than an economic development director, that's.
Could be a part-time employee instead of.
No, not for the caliber of person that you'd want in that.
We have, we have.
You know, when I've talked to several people about their opinions on full-time economic development directors in nearby cities and counties. They're saying, well, Randy said, you've got the best there is in the area, and he would still be part of it, but you know, so. We're, we still have to, I mean, that's, we're still gonna be paying part of that. And you know, why not just utilize him and utilize him better, especially right now, the mayor brought a good point. Fifty-six hundred's going to be going in. We don't even have a lot to offer at this point. We could, we could put it out a year, two years. And we're not gonna be using chewing up that funding and financing right now. But that definitely, I think, can be put down, absolutely.
Would an economic development director be over like the fifty-six hundred project?
If we assign it, yes, they could. And I've been doing a lot of those meetings.
Well, and and we have.
And new developments coming in, the two hundred and something townhomes, that's gonna go in between the station that if we forget one thing, the city's gonna get something we may not want.
Right.
And and anything that's gonna happen along, and and mayor, you have to go with us on this. You were about ready to have his hide last year because he didn't hire an economic development director.
Yeah, well, and on the flip side too, we have to look at the economic development position as an eye towards the future. And we've got fifty-six hundred now, we're going to have thirty-five hundred in Midland. All anybody has to do is we're go down four thousand and look at all the commercial development that is now going in below Midland in West Haven now. That is opportunity that we as a city, I feel lost.
I'd cut eight vehicles before I'd cut an economic development director. Those vehicles are, those vehicles are printing money, so.
Okay, so I think we got to, Sophie is coming back to you.
I'm gonna say yes on an economic development director.
Yeah. It's budgeted, it's balanced.
It's it's in the budget right now, right?
Yep. So we keep the economic development director, which means they're gonna need a vehicle, so we need to keep the community development truck into the gut, in the conversation. Okay.
Could it be a pool vehicle?
Joe has a couple of cars in the garage.
I'm sensing if if the numbers come back, Amber, to look at shutting down the complex and the timing and whatever. Net revenue may come out of that. And then a conversation on the up to fifteen percent in terms of a property tax increase.
So fifteen percent would be six hundred thousand.
Yeah, that the combination of those two things, whatever that number might be. Could be a good conversation for the council then to go into the meeting on the week from today. And then say, okay, it's gonna take a little work, Amber, but we just need to get some some rough numbers. By doing those two things, we could generate enough revenue to take care of the public safety request in terms of additional personnel.
At three and five, I I don't think right now we can budget for nine. I I I would love to, but. If it's a one pers, if it's a one per shift, I think that's what we've gotta look at. At a minimum.
So is it off the table to say, no, wait, look at this in a few months, or are we saying we have to do this right now?
It's it's the truth and taxation piece that has to be decided now.
And so for the, for for the tax revenue that we're looking to generate, it would be for at present. Five police, three fires, is that what I'm hearing? So eight in total?
I guess it comes what the numbers come out to be.
I mean, granted, I highly respect you immensely, you win. But five, I I just still can't see doing five. I mean, I'm, I still think we should be waiting, but. Three, I think, wouldn't be what they want, but I think it's certainly better than nothing to possibly consider it. And I think there still needs to be a balance in regards to that, and.
So three and three?
I mean, possibly. I'm still not even sure I'm sold on that, but certainly. I'm, I definitely think we need to know a little more in regards to sales tax revenue, because. There are too many questions in regards to that for our our funding.
Well, here's what, and that's a good question. Best I can tell going through the Utah Tax Commission data, there's a two-month delay. It's probably not the case in terms of what you get in terms of your sales tax revenue, cause they pay you monthly on sales tax revenue.
With a two-month delay.
But it's a two-month delay that, so we could by August sixteenth. Week, and we don't have it now, we could see the June numbers. And but we won't see the July numbers, but but I I sent you the charts. And and you could look at the charts and basically say, what is the sales tax looking? Joel will have an exception to this comment, but the used car business, the numbers are slowly going down. That was announced in the national news. I've looked at the trend lines in terms of Roy, and we got a lot of used car dealers in Roy. They go, the revenue coming down on those, but the big ones that are still growing, interesting enough, and you probably see the data as well as what I looked at the tax commission. No question, our stores, our groceries are doing well. Interesting enough, manufacturing is going up high. The professional side of of technical engineering is going up real high. So some of those are the charts I sent you, you'll see where the numbers are still growing. If we can get another quarter of that data, I think we can answer a lot of your questions. She will see the revenue, that's seven hundred and thirty-three thousand last month in May. I believe if we can get one more good month, we'll see whether that's gonna stabilize or come down a little bit. We can kind of project what the sales tax revenue is gonna be. And you'll have that data at least a better look before you go into the August sixteenth, where you have to make a decision. Either fifteen or something less, even zero. Okay? Is that reasonable? Okay. That will give the council at least a pretty good idea if Amber can help us run some numbers. Give you an idea of whether or not what kind of money we can have, and if there's enough money to get six. Well, we heard possibly three for police officers, three firefighters. We can basically do that, but there's another piece to this has to be done, Matt, and Travis. If the decision on on next Tuesday is to close the complex, we've got to do everything we can to protect those employees. If there's positions by which they qualify for somewhere else in the city, then we need, we need to be looking at those kinds of options, okay? So I think we just need to flesh it out and then come to the meeting and then be ready to vote. We okay with that? It'll give you the money you need for public safety.
Before the vote happens.
So give you the decision, you need to basically close the complex, so you're not putting more money in it. And then you'll have a hopefully more of a better understanding whether it's going to be a fifteen percent, a ten percent, or a five percent tax. Or maybe a no tax increase. Hopefully, we'll have some of those numbers before we get out.
One last comment, again, as Matt mentioned earlier, these budgets were prepared in February, and we have seen a lot of inflation since February. So whatever we are saving from whether the complex or the property tax increase, if we could keep a portion of it to cover the inflation. Every pieces that departments are seeing, that would be very helpful. But I think we need to start building in a piece every single year to account for that now, okay?
Sell more vehicles.
You know, even just like a hundred.
The reason used car market sales are down, there's no inventory.
Yeah. The only reason my wife got a brand-new Volkswagen Atlas is because we drove past, and we saw one on the lot, and she wanted one, and we went and traded in our.
Grab it while you can.
Yeah, exactly.
I've sold thirty-three hundred vehicles this year.
We'll have, we've had a lot of things that are approved in the current budget that we've had a hard time getting in before the end of the year. So we are gonna add a document, just a one sheet page at the end of the budget that says, this is everything that was approved that we need to carry over this year, because we have not. So just, you'll see that on the.
Maybe let's roll through what we want to expect to happen next Tuesday then. So it's right around the corner, so.
Things I got, Matt, was is the decision to close the complex by the council. And a possible tooth and taxation on for fifteen percent max. I didn't get anything else in that budget that they wanna change. So now maybe a good idea to what's gonna happen next Tuesday, because it's gonna go quick. And there will be a public comment period.
And then we will also have the final budget amendment for this current year to close out those changes too.
That's just carryover from like capital expenditure that we didn't.
There's a couple, like I said, inflationary pieces that the departments, you know, but we've had, sales taxes are up, so we have the money to cover all of that. We're also going, like, back in January, we did that budget adjustment for the ARPA funds. And we are now going to defer those to next year, so that we don't have to do anything with that in this fiscal year.
And we haven't used any of the funds.
So we're just, we're just gonna defer it to next year and deal with it next year, so it's taking that out and then adding.
Anything else?
I think the only other budget item that is that is big that will show up is, just like last year. We put up to a certain amount of dollars to be transferred over to capital projects. That's not anything that we're spending, it's just a transfer for the fund balance. We don't know that fund balance, we always get. You know, a little weary, this is the last opportunity you have, and then come, you know, September with the audit, we need to make sure we're under. Up to a certain amount to be transferred, so it's not anything that we're spending. So you'll see that impacted as well.
And and the law says thirty-five percent now. So you can do thirty-five percent, and we agreed not to let it drop below eighteen percent. So somewhere between eighteen, that's that rainy rainy day fund, Randy, that you talked about.
Correct.
Keep some fund balance in there so that we have some flexibility in case the bomb drops out.
Yeah, we have to have between five and thirty-five percent of revenue, and that's thirty-five percent of revenue.
Let me, let me just ask one last question, then council will go around. Matt, you lived in this city when we went through the last recession. When I talked to Chris Davis, Andy, you might, I know you've been here too. He says, they went in the middle of the recession, he says, it was everything they could do. To do to ensure they keep the people to the point that the council. Did not approve any merit increases, certainly were no colon increases.
It was from two thousand eight to two thousand thirteen about.
And and as a result of that, you're able to keep everybody. You lost some temps, I think, but for the most part, everybody that could, there was a job here for Roy City for them. Matt, I don't know exactly what's about to happen. I've listened to the experts almost every day. It bothers me to be honest with you, because even the experts are got mixed emotions. I mean. We're talking recession when you got one of the lowest unemployment rates in the country, your GDP is still growing. All the indicators are saying, it says, it can't happen, but they're saying it's gonna happen. I I don't even think the experts know, cause we're on, we're on chartered ground right now. At the end of the day, okay, recessions do have impacts on sales tax revenue. Our concern's going to be is we gotta make, we gotta plan. We gotta plan and hope for the best, plan for the worst, but hope for the best until we find a little more stability, I think, in terms of our revenue streams. I've talked to my fellow mayors, and I will tell you, some of them are saying. One of the most important things the city can do is try to get their sales tax revenue. To a very stable point where they're less dependent on the fixed revenue incomes. As you will know, franchise tax is down, by the way, I'm gonna take, I'm gonna close off my account with my phone here shortly.
You're taking money away from.
I'll take some money away. Property tax, Amber, you talked about that, that's a fixed amount, it's it's the only secure amount. I've heard people simply says, get all your public safety under the, under the, under what's stable, which is the property tax. We'll never get there. The difference between what it costs for public safety in Roy and what we basically are renting for property taxes is not even close. So we've got to, we've got to have some stability in in sales tax, but we've got to also plan for the worst. And so make sure that's part of the conversation, okay? We just gotta be watching that, because if the if the people stop buying and sales tax reductions occur, we're gonna be in a hard spot. Okay? Then that rainy day fund will probably be a real salvation. Okay, that's all I've got. Randy, any comments? Okay, are we okay? Sophie? Diane, Anne, you okay? The department heads?
I don't think anybody's okay. There's no win, there's no win in this situation.
I understand. Ross? Let me on for this, and you may have noticed it. I've been hearing that the council members have been basically spending a lot of time with. Asking a lot of tough questions. That's a good thing, because bottom line would be is they need to come prepared to make some tough choices. Better to do it this year than next year, because next year is gonna get real political. It's political, nothing gets done, okay? But feed them the information. Tell them exactly what the impacts are. It's the only way we're gonna get past the emotion and get down to the reality of what we have to do. And that's what we need. We've gotta give them facts. I have told the council, I've embedded them information, not my information, I pull it from the data, and I send it to them. And if they ask me, I'll tell them what I think. But if you don't tell them what they think, they can't make an informed decision. So keep answering the questions, they're gonna keep asking. This is hard. Not just hard for you, but hard for them. They're walking this meeting with a lot of mixed emotions, okay? It was hard. We got one more week, we're gonna get through this, and we're gonna move on this. If there's something else you think is important. Get it to the council, let them know about it, so they can make an informed decision. We've heard from you, we've talked among ourselves. Next week, they're gonna hear from the public. Maybe whole different conversation when they get done with the public. So let's make sure they have all the facts, okay? And you can do a lot to help them get the facts, and hopefully we'll get a decision out of this council that will be based on facts. Motion gets us in trouble. Council? We made some good headways. Thank you. Matt, anything before we close? Okay, do I have a motion then to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, Randy, a second? Sophie, thank you. All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.